Good morning, everyone. Be calling the Board of Commissioners meeting, regular meeting for June 12th, 2025, to order. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and Salute to the State Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, with the invisible, with liberty and justice for all. And salute by the flag of the city of Mexico, as the symbol of perfect friendship and mutual relationship.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone, again. So, next item on the agenda is going to be approval of the regular meeting agenda. I'd like to make a motion to place the presentations in front of a public input, and I don't think these young ladies want to sit here all day waiting for us, so make a motion.
Mr. Chair, second.
So, a motion and a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? See no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so, moving on to presentations, under item C, we have recognition of the 2025 Colby High School Lady Indian Softball Team, and I'm gonna turn this one over to Vice Chair Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was brought to our attention that the 2025 Colby High School Lady Indian Softball Team won the state championship this year, as well as the 2025 Silver High School Lady Colt Softball Team. They both brought blue trophies to the county, and we really appreciate that, and they deserve all the recognition. Ladies, this is an amazing task for all of you, and I'm really proud of all of you guys, and I want to bring you guys before the commission, just to show you guys how much we appreciate it. Mr. Chair, can we get everybody together for a photo with the two teams?
Yeah, let's, uh... Let's make a motion to approve that one. So move.
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Flores, second by Commissioner Stevens. Any discussion? This is under presentation, we wrote something for them, right? Yeah, certificate, okay, and it just to present a certificate, so I guess I can withdraw my motion, right? You know, I'm used to having the proclamations done, now I remember that discussion, so. Anyway, I withdraw my motion, yes, Vice Chair, go ahead and bring them up.
All right. Now do the two teams together, how do we do this, what do you think, Mr. Chair?
Let's do, let's do individual, and then we'll go both teams, how does that sound?
Can we have the Silver High Colt Lady Softball Team come up?
The other one under D was recognition of 2025 Silver High Lady Colt Softball Team.
You guys might need to come up a little bit, because we all wear trousers in that corner. So ladies, we'd like to present you guys this certificate.
Do you want us all in here? Should we get behind or to the side?
Sure, you wanna move forward a little bit? Can we get the Colby Softball Team up there? Who wants this? Who wants this? Come give the two teams, good job, please. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you guys. Thank you, Commissioner Medina.
Thank you, Chair.
Next item that is under presentations, item E, Sheriff Villanueva.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. The reason why I asked to be placed on the agenda was just to briefly go over my budget request that I had submitted back in April, in our April meeting. I was just wanting to clarify a little bit about it. When I did the budget request, I had requested two items, which was some dare funding, and some support on some dare funding, and support of another office assistant in my office. So, I just want to give you an update on the dare funding. I did reach out to Chief Freddy Portillo yesterday from the Police Department, and he had spoken with City Manager Alex Brown, and they both are in support of this program, and they don't want to see it go away, so the city has committed $10,000 to continue the program. They feel that it's also an important thing that we need to continue for our children in our schools, and how the importance of having law enforcement present with the kids in the schools, building camaraderie, and building a good relationship with them, and teaching them how to deal with peer pressure, and how to deal with bullying, and stuff like that. So, I'm happy to hear that they stepped up, and they also want to support our program to continue, because we work in conjunction together, so that's... I'm hoping that the County Commission also supports the program, so we can continue it together as a group between both the city and the county. The second item was the office assistant. I had requested an office assistant from my Civil Division, and the reason why I requested that is because right now currently, my supervisor that's in that division has to do all the paperwork, inputting information into our data system, ensuring that transports are being done properly and coordinated with the courts, because we are at the beck and call of the court, we have to ensure that things are done properly and timely. So, with that being said, I currently have three civil process persons, and one of them is that supervisor, which is doing that. The reason why I asked for the office assistant is rather than bringing another, because there, I'm allotted actually five positions in Civil, and right now we have four, and what I wanted to do is just bring in an office assistant to take over all those tasks that the supervisor's doing, and being able to keep that supervisor out on the field, ensuring that, you know, assisting with transports and paper service, because civil process is a, it's a big process that has to get done. A lot of people think it's easy, but it's not, you know, trying to serve people subpoenas and DVOs and stuff like that is challenging at times, because a lot of times it's hard to just locate the individuals you're looking for, so it's very time consuming, and it takes away from a lot of their other duties that they have to do. That's the reason why I had asked for that position. If it gets approved, I would appreciate it, if not, I'll try again next year, you know, but I'm not gonna, it's up to you guys, whatever you guys decide to do with that. In regards to the $50,000 for a unit, I had never submitted for that request. When I saw it in my budget, I saw it in there, and I thought maybe we were looking at possibly doing a vehicle replacement. I had met with County Manager before the budget, and we had discussed me utilizing my LEPF, Law Enforcement Protection Fund money to purchase a unit, and whatever necessities we have. So when I saw that in there, I was actually surprised by it, but I wasn't gonna, you know, if it was something that they were gonna give to me, I wasn't gonna turn it away, you know, it's something that we could utilize. Just to give you a little bit of background, when I took over in 2023, we were awarded a $500,000 capital outlay funding from the state that I utilized to purchase nine units for the Sheriff's Office, and then within that timeframe also, we purchased an additional seven units, utilizing grant funding, which was Stone Garden funding, junior bill money that was still available, and Stone Garden money. So, I mean, we've done quite a bit of purchases, there's still a few units that need to be replaced, but I was grateful that when we had the previous procurement officer, they were able to bring in a... How can I say it? They, we were able to get five units under a lease program, that's the word I needed, a lease program. Unfortunately, when these units were ordered, they were ordered civilian model, which civilian model compared to a police interceptor or police packaged units, the difference between those is that the updated braking system, the updated suspension system, the interior is already set up for wiring and stuff. So, I mean, I'm appreciative that we got these units. Unfortunately, I had to, because of that, when we sent them to the upfitter to get them outfitted, they had to do a lot of modifications, and they said it was gonna be a concern. And the reason why is because on the civilian model, it has a turn knob for the, to change the gears, and the brake, the emergency brake is all on a console right here in the center, where all our equipment needs to go for the, for the cons, for the equipment that we utilize in law enforcement. So it's been a challenge for them, they've had to do modifications. So, what I did is I went ahead and switched out some of those explorer, their explorers, I switched them out with my administrative staff, and took the units they have that are police-ready. So that's why some of my admin, two of my admin staff do have those civilian model. And what I did with the other, others, is being that civil process does transports, they're not too much in, involved in high-speed pursuit, or actually high-speed going to calls or going out on, you know, to cause, out in the forest and stuff like that. What I'm, what I'm doing is, we just received two of them back from the upfitter, and I switched those civilian models out with the units that Civil has that are fully police interceptors, so that's the adjustments that I've done in regards to that. Another thing that I was working on, that I had talked to the County Manager about, is currently I have some funding that we got through Senator Heinrich's office to, to purchase in-car dash cams. I had met with her about that, and we discussed about how to get that process going and started. That's something that I am fully supportive, the more that we have to protect our officers in regards to complaints about certain things that we have video of, and that, that's what me and the County Manager are in agreement with, that we are in support of it. So we're trying to do that, so I figured maybe possibly that $50,000 was put in for capital. So I'm just wanting to clarify that I had not requested $50,000 for a unit, but I will take it, if you guys offer it, it'll help us advance in our technology, especially because the in-car dash cams are very expensive. But, you know, thankfully, the Senator Heinrich awarded us some funding to start the process, it's not gonna equip all the units with it, but the more we can get, the better, so. That's all I have, I just wanted to clarify a few things, you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions, Commissioners?
I just have one question. Sheriff Villanueva, thank you for the additional explanation. Are there other admin assistants in your department that could take on some of the work of the civil processing?
Currently, I do have, I have three, well, I have the executive assistant, which is my secretary, and then I have an office assistant that's in the front, and then I have my records clerk, that they all have these tasks that they have their duties on. Right now, we're currently, they are, we're all, they're all sharing a lot of stuff that's happening, so it's not that they just sit there and do nothing, they do have other duties that are assigned to them based on our workload, so they do have, I have, actually, I have my executive assistant working, filing all the paperwork on grants and stuff, so I have her helping them out when I need her to be doing stuff for me, but I would rather have her helping them. So I do utilize the resources that I have, it's just, I would rather keep a certified deputy out on the field, and being that you brought that up, I also want to mention something. By keeping this additional certified law enforcement officer out on the field through Civil, I wouldn't have to move a deputy from Patrol into Civil, because my, I am gonna implement, effective July 1, we are gonna have three narcotics investigators that are gonna be assigned in my office, and I'm gonna assign one of them to the task force, and then I'm gonna have to assign here in Grant County. There is an outcry for drug issues in my county that I get constantly, and I am focusing and targeting on that, so that's why I'm asking, with this office assistant, it'll allow the deputies to continue to stay out on the field, helping with the Civil, but then I won't have to move a deputy from Patrol to cover in Civil. So, that's my plan, and I'm hoping that I get the support on it, because the public needs help, and they are asking for assistance with drugs. There is a drug issue that we are dealing with, and anything due to a drugs leads to other problems, and that's why I focused my attention to do this. We're gonna hit it hard, and I'm gonna concentrate on it being in Grant County. The task force does work, the tri-county area, but I haven't met with their, with their coordinator, and explained to him that I need the help up here, I will supply them one of my deputies, but we will also require them to be up here helping us. So that's something that I want to continue, that I want to start back up. You know, unfortunately, when we're short-staffed, it's hard to do extra stuff, but now I'm fortunate that I'm only down one position, and I'm hoping that we're able to get this going, so thank you for the question.
And just one follow-up question. This is a position that's already been approved in the past, and we just haven't filled it? Or, or is it a new position?
So currently, the position that, in civil process, there's, I've budgeted for five positions, but I've only had, I have four of them, I need to fill one more, but I, I'd rather fill it with an office assistant than putting a certified deputy back there.
Commissioner Flores, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. Sheriff, I do appreciate the call, the conversation that we had, the call that you gave me regarding your request for these positions, and the dare, but with, I remember we talked about an org chart, I never received an org chart, and the reason I wanted to see your org chart is because I wanted to see where the civilian positions were at within your organization, and who, what span of control they had over what duties, because that would help me really look at to see what they were doing, and what duties they were doing. I understand a records clerk, and I understand the input of blotters and citations and everything, but it's just hard for me to, to approve this with three civilian positions already, not knowing exactly what they do, and who they're under, and what span of control the officers have with them. That, that's, that's my only concern, and you're, you're... Your servers, the, the, the officers that serve the papers, it's strictly a day shift, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you have, you have four, five officers?
Currently, I have three, and the lieutenant that oversees the division. So that's four.
So the lieutenant is, he's the one in the office, you're saying?
No, the sergeant is the one in the office, the lieutenant has other duty, and I'd be happy to provide you our job descriptions, if that's what you'd like to see. We can easily get those to you, to show what responsibilities each position has. I'd be happy to give those to you, if that's, would help you.
I, yeah, I just wanted to see the org chart with them on the chart, so I see where they're at within the department.
Okay. I apologize if that didn't make it out to you, but I will get it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, civil process has a lieutenant and a sergeant in civil process?
That, well, it's the administrative lieutenant that oversees the civil process division, which also oversees my court security division, and then he's also the coordinator of all the grants, the training, so he's the administrative lieutenant, but has all these other assignments assigned to him?
Okay.
Changed my mind.
Changed your mind? Okay. Anything else, Commissioners? You know, Sheriff, we thank you for coming up, and we appreciate you clearing up some of the stuff. Our process, our budget process isn't complete yet, so we'll be taking all this into consideration, and then we'll be looking at it down the road before we approve the final budget. I don't know when we will be approving the final budget, but July? So, we'll probably have some questions, so we'll be maybe calling you, I know I will, so. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and I will be available to you guys for whatever questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. So coming back up to, on our budget there, I mean, on our agenda, gonna be public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions, want to hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period, speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the County Manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Yes, sir. Just remember to state your name, and then go from there.
Yes. Let me take my glasses off, because I'm kind of blind. Honorable County... It is, which bottom? On, okay, thank you, can you hear me fine?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Honorable County Commissioners, fellow citizens, good morning. My name is Carlos Martinez, I am a wildlife biologist, I have taught and done research on wildlife ecology and management at Princeton University, the University of Arizona, and the University of Wyoming. I have published over 200 papers on both game and non-game species, including elk, wolves, trout, white-winged doves, and a couple of other species. I hope you understand, I'm not boasting, I'm just giving you my credentials, this is what I do for a living, and although mostly now I move cows around, because with the drought, it's a problem, I'm a doctor, then, so. For my dissertation, I worked for USDA Wildlife Services, that then called Animal Damage Control, part of USDA AFIS, in a project that led to effective non-lethal reductions in bird depredation and cultivated fruits. I would like to comment very briefly, it will be less than three minutes, on the contract between Grant County, damn, staying first, so maybe more than three minutes. On the contract between Grant County and USDA's AFIS WS, my comments can be summarized very, very briefly in a single sentence, they're supported by data and evidence. The contract is not cost-effective, and it's not even beneficial for what it is supposed to do, I say this as a professional. In 2024, the program led to the removal, and that's the killing, of 50 coyotes, a couple of northern flickers, that those are woodpeckers, for those of you that don't know birds, a flock of feral pigeons, I think 35, and a handful of rock squirrels and ground squirrel scum, and a few bats. The program also relocated a rattlesnake from our road, something that I do frequently, and I do it for free, so just feel free to call me, and conducted a gopher activity at a six-acre unidentified, I assume, private property. In summary, the program primarily accomplished those of presumed control, and I will explain why I use quotation marks on this, and gopher control at a localized place. I don't know, but I assume that the gopher control used strychnine, the most commonly-used gopher poison, which by accumulates and leads to secondary poisoning of scavengers, things like turkey vultures, and bobcats, and a bunch of other creatures. The annual cost of the program to the county is roughly $94,000. The documented losses from wildlife to county cities has accounted for less than $20,000. This is hardly a cost-benefit, a cost-effective ratio, it's an almost five-to-one cost-to-benefit ratio, so talk about money wasted. If we can see all that the coyotes, which account for half of the presumed losses in caps, the cost is $47,000, which is about $1,000 per coyote, we can do better than that, and the rest, about $47,000, goes to gopher control in six acres. It was unclear to me who benefited from this action. Is this effective? Well, clearly it is not, in either monetary terms or biological control outcomes. All the evidence, and there's mountains of evidence about this, suggests that lethal control of coyotes does not diminish their population, this is something I've worked on in the long term, and it does not reduce livestock losses. Indeed, lethal control can lead to increased livestock losses, and I can explain what, why this is in, if anybody has a question, but this is not a place to give a lecture on wildlife management. But I can send you also dozens of peer-reviewed references, science references, not hearsay. Is there an alternative? Well, yeah, there are many, they are involved among other things, developing educational programs for citizens on methods for property and livestock protection, including appropriate fencing and livestock or guard animals, and in some very limited cases, some selective lethal control. This cost is much, much lower, and more effective with the US offers. These are jobs that are best and should be done by NMSU, the extension office, and New Mexico's Department of Game and Fish. In summary, the country is spending lots of money on a program with tasks that can be better done by citizens and by others. The program is not cost-effective, and it's not worthwhile in its outcome. Why the heck are we doing this? I urged you to terminate the contract, if only because the fiscal responsibility that you owe to us, the citizens of this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
I guess it's on, can you hear me? Good morning, Commission, and good morning, meeting attendees, thank you for being here, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Valerie Dobrich, and I'm a fairly much of a newcomer here to Grant County. My other home is in the very northwest corner of Colorado. I'm a wildlife biologist, and I hunt, I own horses, I grew up in Wyoming, and I have been around trappers off and on my entire life. More than once, they've shown me around a new country, I have pretty much the utmost respect for the old timers. That said, I'm looking over your Wildlife Services Trapper position, and I'm absolutely floored at this salary. I know guys who have worked for 30 years in Wyoming and Colorado, out on the ground with the horses and their hounds, they're not making half of what this guy is making, especially in light of, if indeed the data I'm getting is correct, this gentleman worked 450 hours of actual work last year. That equates to a mind-blowing $205 per hour. The highest-paid professional position in the United States is an anestholic, an anesthesiast, somebody who, anesthesia. That person makes $168 an hour. The second-highest position, a pilot who's certified both for military and commercial aircraft, that person makes $135 an hour. Where in the world did we get this $205 an hour for this gentleman? If indeed, the New Mexico taxpayer, or the Grant County taxpayer, is paying any portion of this contract, I ask you to please sit down, go through this contract, and let's just strip out the pork, because there's gotta be a whole bunch of pork in there. Changing the subject, there's gaps in the data, when I look at the quarterly summaries, I see the number of coyotes that reported predated, and I see the number that this guy harvested, your ADC guy. I see the number of bear and cat complaints or notices that have been filed by a... I see the number of bear and cat complaints or notices that have been filed by a rancher. I see that the trapper went out and he talked with the people who made the claim. That's where the data ends. I do not see if he went out and verified the carcass was indeed taken by a bear and cat. I do not see that he did any kind of follow-up, trying to track down and take care of this problem animal. Before we go any further with this guy's contract, especially in the light of the money you're going to give him, we need to see the rest of that data. What in the world did he do with the supposed cat and bear notices that he got? That's a big item, and I really want to see a follow-up meeting so we can get that answer. Next subject, it looks like your trapper wears two hats. He not only traps for Wildlife Services, he also is a permitted either guide or outfitter. I can't tell if he owns the operation or works, but he takes hunters out, and he's a well-known cat hunter. Okay, when I'm looking at the data here, and I'm not seeing any follow-up on what happened with those bear and cat reports from a ranch, you begin to get a little suspicious. I need to see, all of us need to see, anytime, if I'm an outfitter, anytime my client harvests, I keep track of that. I go to Game and Fish.
You have one minute.
I go to Game and Fish, and they can see what my clients have taken. We need to take that data. We need to compare it with the rancher reports of predation to make sure this person is not double-dipping, namely, wearing his trapper hat to find out where these animals are, wearing his outfitter hat to go in and make darn good money off with his hunters. Um, if that's the case, I think that that would be incredible conflict of interest and would be grounds not to renew this guy's contract, so we need that data. I have a really good suggestion. I'm not going to have time to do it. With your okay, I'm going to ask a friend of mine to read the last portion of this. It's a suggestion that's really going to help everybody who's out on public land, um, anywhere they're trapping. So I have on here, um, you have a copy. I have more copies, anybody who wants one. And my contact information is on here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and please schedule a follow-up meeting.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public input? Do we have anybody else for public input?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Therese the Jewelry Lady, uh, Terry Higgins, and I've, I purchase Blackwell's Jewelers downtown, and, uh, I've been there almost eight years, and I collect a lot of taxes every day, and, uh, submit it and pay, you know, pay accountants for this, and I don't want the money to be going to someone who kills animals. I'm a hippie. I love animals, and I don't think this is right for someone to be paid to kill animals on ranch lands. And I just want to know where my tax money is also going, that I'm collecting every month from everybody. And I don't, I don't like money. I don't want to be part of that service. I'd be glad, I'd love, you know, I appreciate the police, I appreciate education, but I don't, um, appreciate this money going towards this guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking?
Mine is short. I'll ju, I'll read what she had to say in, in this, when you, I'm Glenn Griffin. Eddie Flores is my commissioner. When this got snuck in two years ago in violation of Roxy's bill trapping, here is Valerie's final suggestion. Trapper is required to place a notice within five feet of trap set on public lands. Signs this close, uh, to the traps risk someone seeing the sign from a distance, walking over to, to read it, and then per, purposely set springing the traps. The signs this close to a trap can't be read until the horses, dogs, and kids are already on top of the traps. Since this was snuck in two years ago, you need to make changes. If you're going to continue to break Roxy's bill, state law, then you got to do better with the signs. So now I'm going to read my part. Commissioners, I'm Glenn Griffin. I'm here to talk to you about the Wildlife Services contract under today's agenda agreement, A dash 2508. The proposed contract price is going up $2,000 to $94,234 from $92,000. And that money is important to those within Wildlife Services that live off our taxpayer dollars and the additional funding that Grant County kicks in for the ranchers match from our general budget. Shouldn't be that way. They're supposed to pay their share. That match for the cooperating ranchers is $36,000, but is not meant for years as Grant County steals from other departments' budgets to cover for the ranchers. Last year's match help from the budget was $8,000. I don't know what it's going to be this year. That's a secret. That brings the actual cost to taxpayers for this contract to $55,000, not the $47,000 listed in the Wildlife Service contract. Some commissioners have their loyalties to the ranchers and the mines. But what about the 95% of the rest of us that are paying for this Wildlife Services? Are we not represented before you vote for this high-priced benefit for the free port leasing ranchers? Do we not have a say unless we submit an agenda request form, get approval from the county manager, all done at a minimum of seven days in advance to a regular meeting? Quite a process. If I lived in Luna County, I could talk to you by Zoom, interact by Zoom, or in person with you on agenda items. But you do not allow for expanded public input and do not want interactions with your constituents. Luna County Commissioners have serious questions with and are discussing Wildlife Services in public today, right now. But here, the disabled, the busy, the far-flung Grant Canyons are shut out. Why? Why don't you want our input? Commissioners, do ethics, conflicts of interest, and accountability no longer matter? This contract benefits ranchers, but not our wildlife or the rest of us. This contract is helping privatize public lands hunting with locals no longer able to afford hunting on public land ranches. Please study your contract. I hope you are, and you'll see what we've been telling you. The quarterly reports, and do not give Wildlife Services another blank check. You owe us taxpayers that much. Thank you for your attention. I hope you'll look at the contract and see exactly what we're telling you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking?
Good morning. I am Christine Hess. I am coming before you again. Thank you. Again, I'm standing up for our precious wildlife along this incredible earth. I'm totally opposing this Wildlife Services contract. Where, exactly where is this $94,000 per year coming from? What an exorbitant payment. I don't believe there's too many others in the workforce of Grant County, much less New Mexico, pulling in wages like this, and for less than part-time. There's so much, let alone in our beautiful Grant County, that needs financial help. And you're thinking of approving another year's Wildlife Service contract? We heard the Honorable School Superintendent, Mr. Hawkins, addressing so many shortages, possible closing of numerous schools, no dollars in a fund to cover any emergency scenario in the school buildings. So shouldn't such dollars be going to support precious education for our youth? There are also many low-income family students who could use help. Then we have the homeless. That's a huge check to hand out for someone to kill doves, then harass, trap. Are M44s still in use? Running hounds to chase down wildlife, maybe up a tree and then shot dead. I find all this to be ever so inhumane, actually barbaric. Those killer traps and M44s, what horrid deaths for beautiful wildlife, just trying to live life like you and I. And then, too, how many unintended lives are killed by such, along with dogs? I ask you to get out there, take a hike, take nature and its wildlife in, breathe it in, appreciate and respect it without a gun. You'd be amazed what you don't see out there. It's, it's incredible. I could write a book on my experiences with the wildlife here. Let's put some of our dear Harry Brown's compassion and mentality for this earth and its wildlife back into this Commissioner Board. Again, I'm totally opposed to renewal of this contract. Grant County doesn't have this kind of dollars or funding to flagrantly throw away. There's a whole lot just waiting for funding, including our places of education for our beautiful children. They're precious. I'm requesting that you please start putting all your commission meetings on Zoom so that many others can attend. I have requested this other times, so have others. Why hasn't this been set up yet? Please do so. Also, I and others have also requested in the past, please turn up your speaker system. The volume is extremely poor at times. At Tuesday's meeting, I and others couldn't hear enough of your comments to Mr. Hawkins. There are those who would be here if they could hear everything. And I can hear very well, but I have a heck of a time, um, hearing a lot of what's said, so. Um, and I can't, and I find it to be very regretful that we, the people of Grant County, are shut out. No time allowed for any of our questions and answers. How are our questions and comments to be truly addressed? And I know, Mr. Ponce, you had talked about this.
You have one minute.
But I feel it would be great to do that now and here. On attending numerous Luna County Commissioner meetings, I could do so through Zoom. Thank you, Luna, and we could interact with the board members. Questions and comments were addressed and appreciated. I'm asking again that you, as a Commissioner Board, adopt this practice. Then there can be honest communication between you and the people of Grant County. Also, please don't hold back the Wildlife Services contact, contract on request. Please stand up with a whole lot of Grant County to humanely protect, respect, and appreciate the glorious wildlife of Grant County of New Mexico. Here, those besides just the Rancher Society, please. Thank you. Please take my words to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Barbara Bush. Um, and I just want to say thank you to everyone here for all you do. I know that what you do is not easy. Um, and thank you to the people speaking here today as well. Um, I just want to remind everybody that, at least from where I stood last year, um, we are looking at renewing this particular contract due to exasperation. Um, you know, there was a revised contract that had pretty much everything that all the parties wanted, and then there was a question, and after that, we went back. Um, please, let's not just do that again. Um, so, first of all, I have nothing prepared today, so I'm just talking off the cuff here. Um, I want to say I had, I live in Indian Hills, I had a mountain lion on my property three weeks ago. So they are around, they are going for food. Um, and, you know, we have no issues with this animal. Um, it was there one day, and we have not seen evidence of it since. Um, again, as in last year, I spoke about transparency and accountability. Um, I believe that all the documents that are relevant to the meetings should be available with the agenda online, or in person here, actually both. So just something to think about there as far as transparency. Um, and then accountability, I agree with what's been said earlier here today that we need detailed reports of exactly what's happening out there. The reports that they're giving are not, uh, complete enough. And then, money. Money is always the issue, right? So Luna County requires 40 hours a week. We require 600 annually. 40 hours a week is over 2,000 hours a year. So what are we giving for our money and they're giving for theirs? Another little thing to think about. And, hmm, let me see. I just put down a few notes. Yeah, I think that's all I have to say, but, you know, I just urge you to really look at this contract and look at accountability and transparency. Because as taxpayers, I feel that the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. Um, and that goes for our money. That goes for our hard-earned taxpayer money. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Right, thank you. Just moving on to next item on the agenda. Be a public hearing to open a public hearing and, and discussion to determine if firework restrictions should be imposed within the unincorporated portions of the county due to extreme and severe drought conditions. Can I have a motion to go into a public hearing?
So move. Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shally. Uh, do we have any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're in the public hearing phase. Do we have anybody that, uh, would like to testify? Somebody wants to testify, okay. Uh, can I have a motion to close a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Medina and second by Commissioner Stevens to close a public hearing. Uh, any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We close a public hearing. Under proclamations, item B, proclamation declaring the extreme or severe drought conditions in Grant County imposition of firework restrictions. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion approved. Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by, uh, Commissioner Shally. Do we have any discussion? Do we have anything to add? No? All right, any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, moving on to the next item. It will be, uh, Hila Regional Medical Report. Um, Hila Regional CEO, Mr. Robert Whitaker.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for, um, allowing me to present today. Uh, just to go through a few statistical things, uh, so in the month of, um, uh, April, uh, volume across the hospital was, uh, continues to be higher and, and, and than, than last year. Um, and you can see those in the numbers that were reported out, uh, with admissions, deliveries, uh, or swing bed admissions, surgeries, uh, ER visits, and outpatient visits. We are a little bit lower in our clinic visits. Uh, it's a little bit of a balance. Our, uh, primary care clinic, the Royal Health Clinic, is higher, and then our surgical specialty clinics are a little lower, and that's the balance of, of those. Uh, when it comes to, uh, translating into finances, uh, in the month of April, uh, we reported 8.9 million in operating revenue and, and 8.7 million in operating expenses. Uh, year-to-date, operating revenue is Year-to-date, operating revenue is at eighty-five million, and last year, year-to-date, it's seventy-eight point four million. We've had a good, with all the volume increases, there are revenue increases as well as expense increases. If you exclude, and I'll talk about the HDA and SB 161 funds, but if you exclude those, our total surplus for the month of April was just about five hundred thousand dollars. Year-to-date, we're right around three point seven million dollars. We've accrued, year-to-date, two point seven million dollars in SB 161 funds and then nine point six million in the, that's net in the HDA fund. So, in the HDA program, there's an assessment we pay that's an expense, and then funds are coming, are brought in as other operating revenue. Day's cash on hand still sits around the one twenty-seven, one twenty-eight mark. That does exclude, that's just our operating cash. That does exclude cash in investments, CDs and LGIP. Things that are going on, first of all, I do want to say thank you to our county sheriff's office and other law enforcement that assisted and helped with us on Friday. It was much appreciated, and I'm grateful for the law enforcement services we have in our county, in our area. Just a few things, we, our board did approve our ISUP last night, and so our due date to turn that in as a special district is Friday, June thirteenth, so we'll have that submitted on time. We are currently working on our capital budget and our operating budget, and those will be presented at our board meeting, which is going to be July second. So, the last board meeting, our board approved to move their regularly scheduled board meetings to the first Wednesday of the month rather than the last Wednesday of the month. So, the next board meeting is on July second, and we'll approve operating and capital budgets then, as well as our amended operating budget. Do want, just to share that our employing family picnic is July the twelfth over at Penny Park from eleven till about one, two. And so, another great event for our staff. I am working on community town halls, and this is just a progression of kind of how we're doing things and where we're going with it. Last year, we held a couple of them. This year, and I recognize that not everyone can come to Silver City on any particular night and participate in the town hall. So, I am working on town hall dates to occur in the following locations, and we'll have a traveling town hall if you will. But I do want to kind of, just to be out there and present the information that we have and go through things and updates with the hospital, just so that more people can be involved and engaged in that process. Commissioners, that's my report for this month, and I stand for questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you for the report. This doesn't directly pertain to your report, but I was talking with a constituent the other day about the need for specialty care and how we're such a small rural community that it's difficult to get access to different care. And the idea was suggested that if we had like a specialty clinic with rotating providers, you know, that might come like once or twice a month for different needs to avoid people having to travel so much. So, I just thought I'd pass that along and see if you've already had that thought, maybe have already worked on some partnerships along those lines. Just wanted to communicate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, and Commissioners, in regards to that. I appreciate that. It's something that we've thought about in regards to how can we help, right, our community members to not have to travel for healthcare? And I understand that we're not going to be able to do everything for everyone. We did have, and I'll speak in specialty care, we did have a urologist visit this last week and had a great visit with him and working through some contract things right now with him to have him come out. And we've got another urologist who's interested as well, and he'll make a side visit in July. And so, that's, it's just part of the process as we start to kind of work through changes that we're making with our clinics and how we're providing care, adding that other specialty care that we know is needed is part of the process. If we can have physicians here, that's fantastic. Setting up an outreach clinic that's outreach to us would be good as well, and I've got to know on that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Medina?
Yeah. So, just want to recognize that your contract was extended. I appreciate your commitment to the organization and making sure that the ball keeps rolling for the organization. That's an important part for the caregivers that work for Healer Regional, that they have a solid foundation in a CEO. So, I just want to thank you and then thank the board. They made that commitment to the organization.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Medina, I appreciate that.
That was going to be my only comment. Congratulations again, I told you that. I see good things coming to Healer Regional, like, you know, really enjoyed, you know, I guess not enjoyed, but I really look at our board of trustees and what they've done and the work they've put into it. I really appreciate that. I appreciate all your work. I think, you know, you know me and say what I say. You know, I think your job's going to get a lot easier now with what you have, and we want to thank you and continue doing what you're doing. And my biggest thing is remember, Healer Regional is our community, and keep digging into that. Keep going into our community, keep boasting Healer Regional, and I think we're going to be good. But I thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you. Moving on to next item on the agenda will be the elected official reports. Madam Clerk, do you have a report? I didn't hear her. No? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Khan, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Chairman Ponson, Commissioners. Attached is the report titled Tax Maintenance Report for the Total of Taxes Collected for the Month of May is two million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and eight cents so far for the 2024 tax rule. Twelve million, nine hundred and fifty, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty cents has been collected, which left the county the collection percentage of eighty-nine point four-one percent. For the total 2024 tax rule, one million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-two cents remains uncollected. The total percentage collected for the ten-year collection as of May thirty-first, 2025, is ninety-five point four-two, of which a total of a hundred and twenty million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents of taxes were collected. That leaves a total uncollected balance of taxes of five million, eight hundred and two dollars, eight, five million, eight hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and two cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions? Thank you. Sure. No report. Thank you. That's it. Okay. Moving on to the next item, which is the consent agenda for minutes for the May eighth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, May twenty-second regular meeting, and June indigent healthcare claims and the Safety Net Care Pool Payment Program of New Mexico Human Services Department.
A motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shally. Do we have any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, appointment of an ex-official member to the County Livestock Loss Authority. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Flores and also to add Commissioner Shally as the alternate. If we have an alternate?
I think we're just a proxy, so he would be Commissioner Flores's proxy if he's unavailable.
Okay, so my motion would be to, well, it's the same thing what I made. Okay, do I get a second?
Second.
So, a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next agenda item is appointment to Healer Regional Medical Center to the board trustees. That's what I was going to look up, but, okay. So, it's appointment to Healer Regional Medical Center for board trustees. We have two positions that are going to expire, I believe, at the end of this month, the end of this month, so we need to appoint two. So.
Mr. Chair, let's nominate Pat McIntyre and Gail Stemma for reappointment to the Board of Healer Regional Medical Center.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Flores, second discussion.
I've just had the comment that I was impressed by, I don't see it in front of me, but was it Ray Gelner, right, by his application and experience in hospital management? So, I believe that Pat and Gail will both do an excellent job, but I also really wanted to see Ray Gelner given a chance. So, I was going to nominate Gail and Ray, but I'll go ahead and go along with Pat and Gail. Just maybe if we have another opportunity in the future, I hope that Mr. Gelner will reapply.
Okay. Yeah, no, we, thank you. You know, I sort of look at this and I understand what you're saying in his experience, and I appreciate that. So, yeah, we'll see what happens here in the future. Any further discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. So, we have Gil and Pat back on board of trustees. Next item J is Grand County Board of Commissioners' Work Session and Meeting Schedule. I believe that was for November, right? For November.
I move to approve the revised schedule.
Okay, well, I, we, okay. So, I think we need to put a motion in as to how we're going to revise it, right? Combine, do you want to combine them in November, work session then?
With just the one meeting in November.
Work session and regular meeting on that day. You got that, Clerk? Okay, we have a motion. Did I get a second? I'll second it. So, a motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by me. Do we have any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item, which is Southwest Contracting Proposal for Natural Resources Conservation Services. It's the NRCS. Mitigation Services. Do I have a motion or discussion?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shally. Do we have any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the inventory deletion list, and I think we've heard from Ms. Montoya at our work session. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the inventory deletions as presented.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Shally, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to still under new business, item M, Award RFP twenty-five dash zero eight, Development of a Community Wildfire Protection Plan to H2O Partners Incorporated?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shally. Do we have any discussion? Okay. Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to agreements. Agreement eight dash twenty-five dash zero eight, United States Department of Agricultural Work and Financial Plan, AFIS. Do I have any motions?
I move that we approve the contract as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, a motion from Commissioner Shally and a second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Mantra, I was not under the complete understanding last week. One more time, reiterate. Percentage of the county commits to this contract? Is thirty-four percent?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, yes. So, federal appropriation, federal government share is sixty-six percent. The county's share is thirty-four percent, and a portion of that is our Taylor grazing fees that are allocated to that. Taylor grazing fees are usually twelve to fifteen thousand, so what we're, what we're using out of the general fund is less than twenty thousand.
Right. I just need clarification. I just want to make sure we had that discussion correctly on Tuesday. That's all I have to.
Okay. You know, Tuesday I talked about a couple of things there and how it had been voted down and then brought back up, and yes, I respect that. Devoted the Commissioners. You know, really what I want to say in my discussion to you all is, I really appreciate the public input that has come here and people that have spoken to it. And I thank you for doing that and for speaking what you feel and what you believe in. I totally get it. I understand that. Where I'm struggling sitting up here right now, and I guess my question would be to the county manager, can we end this contract at any time that we want? Can we bring it up and end it? So, and the reason I asked that, and the answer was yes. The reason I asked that is because as county commissioners, you sit up here, you listen to people, you listen to people outside of here, and one thing that's really disturbing me and has been disturbing me this whole meeting is, I don't see Brandon Jones sitting here advocating for this contract. I do not see any representative from Wildlife Services sitting here telling us what. I don't see the public that the last time we went through this saying why we needed what we did. To me, is this where they think this is just going to be a give-me? You know, when you believe in something and it's your job, you should be sitting here in this audience, public input, and you should be saying, this is why we need it, this is what we're doing. The pieces of the report are, it doesn't matter what we put in, we've changed their reporting system so many times, I don't think anybody's ever going to be happy how they report their things. But right now, my thing with this contract is, I don't see anybody sitting out there asking for this contract. And in my mind, I'm sitting here thinking, well, maybe they don't need it. Maybe they don't need it, because if you need something, you're going to be in here and you're going to be passionate and you're going to advocate for it. So, the unfortunate part, and I'm making this public, the unfortunate part is if here in the near future, I don't see, and it's up to you guys, you guys have a vote. I'm not the one that says what passes and what doesn't, other than after I hear the vote. We have a member, we have five members of this commission that have a say-so. But here in the near future, if I don't see the support for this Wildlife Services contract, and I don't see any of their representatives sitting here, I will tell you, I will put it back on. and I don't see any of their representatives sitting here, I will tell you, I will put it back on there to end it. Because this is not how I like to do business. And I think if, uh, and I know I'm repeating, but I think if you're passionate about something and think we need something in this county, you should be sitting there too. So that's what I have to, uh, say about my discussion. Any other comments, Commissioner Stevens?
Um, thank you. Yeah, we, we talked a bit about this on Tuesday. And as I stated then, the, the two main reasons why I, um, will continue the contract are, number one, if we, if we didn't have it, I do worry that more animals would be harmed in, un, inhumane ways, because people would just take it into their own hands. That's one point. The second thing I worry about is that, as our county manager said, our actual financial commitment to this contract is less than twenty thousand dollars. We could not hire someone who would deal with calls when people have, you know, animals who are, um, threatening or causing damage. We couldn't hire someone for that amount of money. So this allows us to leverage the federal funds. Um, I, I am sensitive to harming animals. I don't wanna do that, I don't think anyone does. Um, I, reading through the contract, you can tell a lot of care has been taken to remove the M forty-fours, to remove the use of traps. Um, if traps are used, there's a notification system. If the notification system isn't used, then the, um, the staff has to check it within twenty-four hours, you know, to avoid prolonged suffering. Uh, the quarterly reports, so that's, that's all moving towards accountability. So you can tell there's been an effort made. Um, but I also feel like something needs to be different, because it seems like these same arguments came up last year. And I don't wanna just, every year we have this happen. You know, the contract comes up for renewal and we hear from a lot of concerned citizens. And, um, and, and I think the missing piece, which some of the, um, public commenters spoke about was education. And maybe there could be an opportunity, like Chairman Ponse said, where we could hear from Wildlife Services about, you know, their philosophy, their attitude, how they go into it, the attempts that they made. I know that, I, I'm not sure exactly what the right forum for that would be, but I see that in the contract, there is outreach in there. So I, I would like to see more information, more dialogue with Wildlife Services. Also, it seems like we have all these passionate citizens who want to help and they wanna be part of the solution. But I think just arguing about this contract every year is not productive. Um, you know, we had the gentleman, the wildlife biologist, Arthur Ratcliffe, who spoke. Um, and he said he would be happy to go out there and deal with skunks. Well, you know, maybe we could get a group of, of people who are passionate about this to form some sort of a ad hoc group where when, when people have concerns, they can call someone. Um, but until we get that established, I think we, we would be smart to continue the contract, because we don't have anything else to replace it. That's all I have to say.
My last comment here is Mr. John Grant, State Director of New Mexico, Wendy Anderson, Regional Director of New Mexico, um, Mr. Fajardo, Mr. Brandon Jones, and people that need this, where are you at? You know, so if I put this back on the table down the road, I'm not saying it has to end it, but where are you at? You know, just like we support this contract, we support their constituents. I think that they should have a duty also to support their contracts. So that's my last comment. Anybody else have a comment, Commissioner Medina?
One more. Um, Mr. Chair, I agree with a lot of your comments, uh, when you put it in that perspective. It, it opens right to a lot of things. Uh, Ms. Manager, what's the alternative if this does not pass? What is the alternative? People get their guns and start shooting bears in their backyard and stuff like that? Is there another opportunity? Um, I know the biologist gentleman talked about the extension office. Do they offer service, services to this capacity?
The extension office? No.
No?
Not to my knowledge. I wrote a note to ask Jessica what they do provide, but in all of the annual reports that we hear from her, I, I've never known that cooperative extension provides that kind of work. We discussed on Tuesday what the role of Fish and Wildlife and Game and Fish was. But, um, I agree with Commissioner Stevens, until you have something else in place. And right now, I'm not aware of anything that you would use to replace this for less than twenty grand.
I like the idea that Commissioner Stevens brought up about the getting a group of individuals. I've just got some, some hesitancy in, in the putting people to go out there and take care of an animal, 'cause the first time they do, somebody gets bitten or stung or killed. You know, where does that put us from the liability? 'Cause we're the ones that called them and requested them, and I think that, that gets kind of frightful on our side. But, um, at this point, if there is no alternative, I, I guess the, the choice is why? You know, so, um, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody in post? Okay, motion carries, but you might see it come back up soon. Moving on to next item, um, from the agreement is eight dash twenty-five dash zero nine. It's fiscal year twenty-six, rise, scope of work.
Make a motion approve.
I'll go in second. So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by me. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Under item P, Amendment Two, to end medical and behavioral health services at Grant County Detention Center. Agreement?
Make a motion approve as presented.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any, uh, discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, moving on to resolutions. Resolution R dash twenty-five dash thirty-eight, resolution designating the location of, of Election Day polling places.
Make a motion approve as presented.
I second it.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by, uh, uh, Commissioner Shaly. Do we have any discussion? You know, the only discussion I have is, and I, I know I made some of my comments on, uh, Tuesday. You know, I, I took a look at, at, uh, I took a look at the, uh, the article that was put in legal for, to have members appointed in it. It, it is, you know, and I'm just saying that it, it is pretty broad as far as that goes. I didn't have a chance to just look at the statute or anything and study it. But, uh, it looks like, uh, you know, there really, it's for, I saw in the, in the newspaper, there really isn't a deadline to submit letters or, or anything like that, or, or sort of like what we do to, to appoint trustees and all. I just wanted to give you the guys that information. But at the end of the day, our clerk, uh, you know, um, she knows how to follow along and I'll go with that. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item R. It's, uh, R dash twenty-five dash thirty-nine. It's budget adjustment that was presented to us on Tuesday.
What's different?
I second it.
So there's Commissioner Medina's made a motion, Commissioner Shaly, uh, second it. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So if I can have a motion to recess as the Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Grant County Board of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so a, um, motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so now we are the Grant County Board of Finance, under IMS, County Investment Presentation by our Treasurer, Mr. Khan.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Um, before you, you'll see the investment accounts, um, as of April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, this is the investment account summary, uh, beginning with Morton Capital, um, Financial. Beginning value as of April first, twenty-twenty-five is ten million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. Uh, for total deposits of sixty-one thousand, twenty-nine dollars. Interest income for the month of April, a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty, fifty-three cents, with a change in value of fifty-eight thousand, six dollars. Market value as of April thirtieth with Morton Capital, eleven million, a hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and five cents. Uh, moving on to, um, the Stiefel Investment. Um, beginning value as of April first, twenty-twenty-five, twelve million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and five cents. Total deposit of eighty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Interest income, seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents, with a change in value of thirty thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Total market value for this Stiefel, um, investment portfolio, twelve million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Um, we also have, uh, the LGIP with the State Treasurers Office. That's, um, acronym for Local Government Investment Pool. Beginning value as of April first, twenty-twenty-five, ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Um, with the total amount of interest income of three hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Total market values of April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Um, the grand total of the Grant County Investment Portfolio year to date is twenty-three million, seven hundred and six thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. And that concludes my investment, um, presentation.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Treasurer Khan. Um, I just was curious how the three, Morton, Stiefel, and LGIP, how those three were selected and kind of what's the rationale for having those?
Okay, great. So for years, the county, even before I came into office, operated with Morton Capital, um, being, having them as the investment broker. Um, as I started getting my feet wet and into the Treasurers affiliate, I started hearing, you know, other Treasurers stating, you know, how they're making their county money, what they're doing. So I was like, why aren't we doing that? Um, there's other county treasure offices that do hold more than three. There's some that have four, some that have six. Um, I did have a third one with Messero and they just didn't perform well and I terminated them. Um, and transferred that portfolio into Stiefel, um, Financial. So if you see on the total deposits, eighty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents, which with, was left of transferring and zeroing, zeroing out that, um, portfolio with, with Messero.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have any further questions?
One more comment.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Khan, uh, what makes a determination to do your deposits? Is it based on percentage? Is it based on how you're gonna move something? What's the, what's the factor that makes you move into certain accounts?
Like, um, Commissioner, Chairman Ponse, Commissioner Medina, are you talking about excess money on investing into the investment?
Capital, an example, deposits sixty-one thousand, twenty-nine dollars. What makes you determine, uh, what, how are you moving money?
Okay.
I'm just trying to find, I'm, it's a she with a lot of information, just, I'm trying to.
Absolutely, it's, it's a little bit more involved. So the sixty-one thousand, twenty, sixty-one thousand, twenty-nine, um, dollars. So the, um, TRT, TRD, there was a lawsuit with Quest and, oh gosh, Quest and, um, com, not Comcast, it'll come back to me. So what the TRD, um, with the State of New Mexico Tax and Revenue Department advised us to do was pull money out just in case, um, whatever their, what was finalized in court and they wanted it in an, um, interest, um, account. So the best route that I, I thought, 'cause we don't have a savings account, was to pull it and place it into Morton Capital, where it would accrue interest so in case at the end of whatever the courts decided, um, that's what we would have to, uh, pay back, um, for those, um, there was, had noticed a value, so they were, they were, words not coming out of my mouth. I'm thinking I have to switch to Assessor. Um, they, they were disputing the valuation of, of their property taxes. So that's where that originated. So it ended up that, um, they negotiated, they went through mediation. So, um, all we had to do was just do tax rule correction and then this was just observed into the, uh, Morton Capital Investments.
Okay. When you get the opportunity to look at a, a, a report, since it's just an investment account report, um, you know, when you, everyone always looks at the bottom line. When you, when you look at it, you had grow to almost a tune of three hundred thousand dollars, so something must be going right.
Absolutely.
Just wanna tell you, I appreciate, and the comment you made about, um, canceling out one of your other report performance, that's, that's a good evaluation on your part, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much for explaining this, I was just really curious about it.
And, and I can and I hope we have future Board of Finance meetings. Um, I, I do appreciate that, as other counties do have Board of Finance meetings. Um, and I am quietly, quite fond of the investment portfolio that has grown. I do have colleagues that are more of an, in, um, investment gurus and, and I'm like constantly linked to them for advice and, um, and, and learning much as, day to day, as I'm growing with this as well. Um, I'm proud that this has doubled since my tenure as being Treasurer and, and hope to grow it again within the last of my, my tenure, my second term.
Could you throw this document in and, at the end of the quarters, please? So the, so the commission can just review, keep an eye.
Do you want it at the end of every quarter or Treasurers' report?
Whatever you're getting off the quarter or it's off the.
I, I do receive.
Quarterly.
Okay, thank you.
It's quarterly. Okay, that's perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the question.
Do we have any further discussion or questions, Commissioners?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If we can have a motion to adjourn as the Grant County Board of Finance and reconvene as the Grant County Board of Commissioners?
Submove.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shaly. Um, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to Commissioner comments. County Manager, do you have anything to say before I go to Commissioner comments?
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Medina, do you have a report?
So, just a couple of comments. Um, I do appreciate the public input today, um, very clear on what they wanted, but, but they kind of sidebarred off a couple of times regarding transparency and accountability and so forth. Um, it's really interesting, if you actually sit up here and you look at the screens, they talk about the availability, about, uh, obtaining documents and, and transparency. If you look at the, at the left side of the page, attached to every agenda is every document that we review in the, in this thing. Um, I just, you know, County Manager, I made a comment to you on Tuesday about, is it available? Is it, and you did, and when you, I'm up here on the website and you can follow the Commissioners' meeting just by what we're looking at, you're looking at as a community member on the website. So I just wanna make sure that people are aware of it, that, that it is available to anybody, anytime. It's at your fingertips, anytime you go on the internet to visit the Grant County website and those kind of things are available. Um, transparency, I think, is key for every Commissioner, as well as the County Manager. Um, and, and i- it's important for the community to know that they're, they're able to, to obtain these documents as well, um, so they can see what, what we're looking at.
these documents as well, um, so that they can see what what we're looking at. Um, I do appreciate the support on the wildlife stuff today. Um, a lot of interesting comments were made. Um, it's just, I I've just got big concerns that if we don't have some type of protection in there, somebody's going to get hurt by a wildlife animal. Uh, one of the hospital administrators pulled me aside yesterday morning and advised me his dog in the Little Walnut area had just gotten eaten by a lion of some type out there. It's interesting that Ms. Bush described a lion being in the area because that's the same area he discusses. So, I mean, things gotta, things gotta take a a role, so we have protection for our citizens, and I totally understand that. Um, other than that, that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina. Commissioner Stevens?
I just want to add to that, that personally, I take it very seriously. If people call me or email me, that I respond, and I will uh, hold a meeting with anyone that wants to meet with me. I think all of you are the same. So I would encourage constituents to not wait for an item to be on the agenda necessarily. If there's something you are concerned about, to reach out and make a meeting, and so we can work on things, you know, all year long, not just when they're on the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Flores, do you have a?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you. Just a few items. I'd like to again congratulate our state champions, Cobre and Lady Colts softball team. It's not easy to get a state championship, and I know they've worked throughout the year, and and sometimes I think some folks just don't realize it's a state championship. And for those of us that have played sports and been in athletics, to get that, win that final game of the season is is very important. And um, again, especially two of our schools within the counties are a great feat, and so very proud of both schools. Again, congratulations and thank you for for sharing that with us today. Um, I'd like to just give an update on the fire department. I spoke, Fire Department in Dos Griejos, I spoke to the County Manager a couple of days ago, and the update is it's with the architects right now, but we are moving forward. Progress is being made, and it's not forgotten, and I will continue to get updates to see where that is is gonna start there in Dos Griejos. I um, I appreciate everybody reaching out to me with with their concerns. I wanted to say thank you to Joseph, Hogen, and Jason Lockett. They've been very receptive to my requests for uh, issues within the county. We're very um, privileged to have both those folks and everybody else working for us. I just also want to mention, Mr. Chair, that I've heard from my constituents in the in the Mimbres area, the Tila Hot Springs, the Cliff dwellings area. I've heard from dozens and dozens of folks out there opposing the cell phone tower that was gonna go up there. And I'm glad that that's changed, and I just want them to know that I I hear them, I appreciate the comments, I share their their sentiments. I also enjoy the wilderness, going out there and sort of being away from technology and and just, that's, that's, I think that area is very precious to us here in Grant County. And I don't want to go out there with cliff dwellings, uh, take my family hiking up there to the to the dwellings and look up to my ride or something and see a cell phone tower there. Again, thank you for reaching out to me. I tried to reach, return everybody's phone call, uh, email. If I missed a few of you, I apologize. I will continue to reach out to you and and let you know what what we've done. Um, with the dialogue with regards to the um, the deprivation, uh, the Wildlife Act, I I didn't know there was an issue with volume. Um, I I think that's very easy to fix so that folks can hear us. I I appreciate the the comments. I didn't know people couldn't hear us, and and we could work on that. Zoom, I'd be open to Zoom. I don't know why Zoom hasn't worked. We have it on Facebook Live, but I I don't think, for me personally, I don't think Zoom's a big issue with having it on Zoom, but maybe, I'm new to the Commission, maybe there's other issues that that are there that I'm not aware of.
I'm gonna address some of that here.
And again, like Commissioner Stevens said, uh, reiterate her her comments, I know that we all have open access to all of the citizens of Grant County. Yes, please feel to reach out to us anytime. I'm I'm open to phone calls, meetings, uh, for any citizen, for any issue. I understand that during public comment, we can't have question and answer period because that's not the appropriate time or place, because for some issues, we we might be up here for hours, and it becomes a debate, it doesn't become a comment session. And that's why it's specifically there for comment, and that's why we specifically as as Commissioners can't respond either good or bad. That's the way it was on the school board, the same reason. Um, on the school board, we gave them three minutes, but as as school board members, we could not comment either way as well. And I think that's just to keep the flow. We want to hear their comments, they're noted, and we move on to the next comment. And I I think it's a good process that we have in place. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Shalley?
I reported on last, on Tuesday, but again, I I want to thank those who have spoken, but also the perspectives of all the Commissioners. There's a reason we have every contract in place that we have at this county. We don't, I I disagree with the perception that this only serves a small uh, percentage of our community, uh, the Wildlife Services contract. And, but I also agree, we need a public presentation of exactly why it's in place and the benefits it provides. And and then if there's a better option, then we should consider it. Nobody should be afraid of talking about it, so um, uh, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shalley. Um, yeah, no, and and that's where I'm headed is is, you know, I do appreciate the the public input, and I was gonna talk a little bit about, um, you know, I think that this Commission and the last Commission that I served on has been very transparent. You know, we don't hide anything. You know, the forms are there. You know, the comments about transparency and being on the agenda. I think that the people that, anybody, every, I think a lot of people understand Wildlife Services contract is gonna be here every June. You have a whole year to prepare for it. You know, don't wait till a day or two. It's not hidden in the agenda. The agendas are posted there. I thought, and I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the table, I thought we used to have copies up there too for people to come in to get an agenda. I'm not sure if it's still, it's still there, if they can pick up an agenda. So I think the transparency part to me, I think this board has been very transparent. I know that I've been very transparent, and you guys hear me, I shoot out my mouth every every meeting, uh, with with what I'm thinking and and what I'm feeling uh, on some of these things. Um, you know, one thing that's one of my pet peeves as being a Commissioner is, we're always hearing, well, Demme does it this way, Hidalgo does it this way, or we get a presentation while in Utah and Wyoming, and well, you know what? I like to be a leader, not a follower. I think this is Grant County, this is our county, this is what we need to take into our hands, and this is what we do. I'm not gonna sit here because Luna County does it one way, their chair is their chair and their board is their board. They can run their meetings however they want. If they want to put public input, then put, if they don't, that's fine. This is Grant County, this is the Board of Commissioners, and I see it, we're all leaders. So I don't sit back and listen to, uh, while also Colorado, Wyoming, Demme, Nordberg, whatever. It it, this is Grant County. Um, this is what we are elected for, is to represent our county and to represent our constituents, and and I think we need to keep it to what fits Grant County, not what fits other counties. Um, you know, the comment about Zoom's come up a few times also. Uh, you know, I have a personal opinion about Zoom. You know, Zoom was brought in at a time where it needed to be brought in during a COVID era. You know, I think that a lot of companies have struggled to in in the work workplace because people got so used to Zoom, they got used to, you know, some other costs with childcare, some of this, that, whatever went down. And at the end of the day, you know, to me, I like the interaction with people. Um, we've had Zoom on here before during this COVID. Our IT department, Mr. Baca, does a great job with what we do here. Uh, Ben, back there with Katz, I think does a great job with what he's doing. But technology is technology. I cannot see or look into the future and see what kind of system our citizens have. You know, there for a time, we weren't even hearing half of what the public was saying in on Zoom, whether if it was an issue on our end, an issue on their end. To me, as a county commissioner, I sort of felt like, you know, this isn't working because we're not getting exactly what they're trying to say. We're missing words, we're missing some of our words. So, you know, I think it was the last Commission, we got away from Zoom just because of that, just because of the technical issues. And then you have people that forget to mute after they speak. So now we're hearing their dogs, you know, their phones ringing, whatever it may be, and it it sort of was a distraction for for us to conduct our meetings. You know, I think our building, I'm sure our building, I don't think, I'm sure our building is is ADA compliant. I'm sure if they call ahead of time, that our County Manager and their staff is gonna do everything possible to assist with that. I think that it's a lot, you know, that that we're not just closing the doors and saying we don't want this meeting to happen. You know, it's on Facebook, Katz, you name it. Right now, everybody's hearing our comment, everybody that's logged in is hearing our comments. So, you know, I'm just letting you know what my experience was as a Commissioner with Zoom. And the other part is, I like people to stand in front of me so I get to know them. I get to know a name and maybe meet them down the road. So that's what it is about uh, Zoom there. Um, I understand, you know, my thinking also in this Wildlife Services has always been, what other options do we have? You know, it's a hard, hard thing to do. Every year we go through this. Um, you know, part of it was my failure. I thought, well, let's meet, let's do that, and I hope one of you Commissioners uh, takes on that task to meet and and try to figure out what's gonna work best. But at the end of the day, you know, I really appreciate, even if they, you know, whatever they say, whether I agree or don't agree, it doesn't matter what I agree with, is they have every right to put in public input, and I appreciate that, and I learn a lot from them. But on the other side, I understand where the, and I'm not saying it would pass if I put it back on here. Um, you know, everybody has their own individual votes and their own individual way of thinking. But when I sit here as a Commissioner, and the people that advocate for it, and the people that want this don't show up, that's a little discouraging to me as a Commissioner. You know, I'm sure that anybody in the public that wanted a contract for Grant County, you've seen it. They sit up here, they talk about it, and and they give us an overview of what it's intended to do. Um, my personal opinion, I think that Wildlife Services and and some of the public has have gotten too lax on it and and said, oh, yeah, the Commission's gonna pass it. You know, well, you know, as you noticed today, the Commissioners did have questions. And was any part of their organization here? You know, do they really care about it? That that's my biggest question. And and, you know, when I tell you something up here, I'm not saying I'm gonna put something on the agenda, it's gonna pass, I'm not saying that, but I will put it up here. And I would like to see some of your, your, you know, as a Chair of a board, a lot of this is, your Commissioners have questions, and you want your Commissioners to have those answers. And that's where I'm, why I'm at, where I'm at on this. But hopefully it gets better with this. But other than that, um, I have no further comments unless you guys have anything else.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just thank you for clarifying, clarifying the the issues with Zoom, and I totally agree with you, and I I do agree with you with Zoom, um, the issues, you have the mute button, and some people would, you know, maybe say something different over a computer than they're in person, but thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Anybody else have anything? You good? All right. So I will adjourn this meeting.